Burlington School Committee on March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty. Get the date right. And as a preliminary matter, this is Martha Simon, Chair of the Burlington School Committee. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Paul, please respond. Please respond in the affirmative.
I can hear you, yes.
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 Yes. Are you going to say the names?
I'm calling now to confirm that you are present. Okay. Say each person's name, and then I would ask for you to respond in the affirmative. Chris Monaco.
Here.
Steve Nelson.
Yes.
Kristin Russo.
Yes.
Tom Murphy.
Yes.
Okay, staff, when I call your name, also please confirm that you're here and respond in the affirmative. Dr. Conti.
Present.
Mr. Larkin.
Here.
Ms. Kasha.
Yes.
There are speakers on the agenda, including other staff. Ms. Purchase.
Present.
I think, is Ms., um... Not at this time. Ms. Clark is not here.
I'm here, yes. You're breaking up, Martha, but I am here.
Oh, okay. Is that better? Anyway, all right. Is Ms. Hood here tonight?
Yes, I'm here.
Director of Special Ed. Thank you. I didn't specify titles, but maybe we'll do that later. Is there anyone else on this call, on this recorded meeting at this point, who I have not named?
Uh, me.
And I apologize. Cuna, Director of Operations, oh, wait. And are you, you're here?
Yes. And Mr. Eiler as well, too.
Mr. Eiler from the Ways and Means School Subcommittee?
Yep.
And Diane Creedon.
Okay, Diane Creedon.
Susan Harrigan.
Let me just finish repeating. Susan, Diane Creedon from the Ways and Means School Subcommittee and Susan Harrigan from the Ways and Means Subcommittee. All right? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who's on this recorded meeting?
Someone here, Martha, it's Sharon.
Sharon Gilbert, I apologize, our recording secretary. Thank you, Sharon. I don't see everyone's picture tonight, so I'm having trouble remembering everyone. Is there anyone else I haven't mentioned? Okay. So this is, um, a good evening. This is an open meeting of the Burlington School Committee, and it's being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of the COVID-nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-nineteen virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with Agenda Materials, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. It is my understanding that this meeting is being broadcast live from B-Cat and broadcast live on Facebook Live. Is that correct, Mr. Cuna?
Yes, it is.
And it will also be recorded and archived at B-Cat and available for anyone who wants to see it later. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation, and this meeting will not feature public comment. Although, anyone, of course, is welcome to send us emails or contact us after the meeting with any concerns or questions. For this meeting, the Burlington Public Schools School Committee is convening by a video conference via WebEx, as posted on the town's website and the agenda. And please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees, all attendees, are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. The meeting business ground rules, we are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do, please permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, the Chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members of the committee, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps to generate accurate minutes. I want to invite Mrs. Gilbert to request clarification if she needs it. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote, and I will call on each member for the vote. Is there anyone who would want to comment or ask a question before we move to the first item on our agenda? I want to ask the public for their kindness as we do this for the first time, and we'll do our best to make this transparent and available to everybody as possible. So the first, the first item is the call to order, which we've done. And now we will have a coronavirus update from Dr. Conti. There's a note items here. Dr. Conti, I would like to call on you to begin that conversation and to let me know if there are other people that you would like to make comments or contribute to your updates.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. We just wanted to start that we are in our second week of the break from attending school and just wanted to provide a bit of a summary of what's been happening over that time, because there's been a lot happening, and then where we plan to go moving forward. So I think the initial decision came collaboratively with some surrounding communities, and I think we all were taking a health and safety... We were all making health and safety decisions first. So really, in the first week, and the reason we had the break from school was to prevent the spread of the virus in the community. And then as part of that health and safety effort, one of the first things we did was to establish a way to get some of the families who we provide regular... We provide breakfast and lunch service for, to make sure they could continue to get fed. So with that, Madam Chair, if Patrick, if you would introduce Patrick, he can talk a little bit about the partnership with the Burlington Food Pantry and sort of where we are with that. And then certainly, I'm sure that he will express my gratitude for their partnership.
Yes, Mr. Larkin, can you report on that, please?
Thank you very much. So the way this evolved for us as a school district was, on the Friday that some of the central office folks were in, we had made contact with the Burlington Food Pantry, and they decided that they had a lot of familiarity with many of our families. They provide a lot of lunches during the summer, that they would be happy to help us take on the challenge of making sure that the students that we provide lunches for get these resources during our closure. So with that, I had a discussion with Cheryl Barnes, who is the co-coordinator of the Food Pantry. I did speak to her again today as well, as we enter Week Two. But we were able to send over a number of perishable items from the schools that Friday before we went on the closure that would have gone to waste for us, and they happily took those on. And they were, again, distributed to a number of families, not just our families. And we've been checking in with them regularly. Both Judy Walsh and, again, Cheryl Barnes have been my two main contacts. And what they need now, if you don't mind me saying, and I'll open it for any follow-up questions, but they're doing well. They feel like they can accommodate the needs still going into Week Two. They have two programs. They have a lunch program for kids program that they run during the summer, and that's kind of what they've picked up now during the closure, which is helping with our free and reduced lunch students and their families. And we have a document that we've shared within our Burlington Public Schools distribution list, where a number of staff members have gone over and helped with the packing of the bags for the lunches and to do different tasks to help get those out. Sorry for the plug here as well. They also have some general food pantry support they could use. And if anybody's interested in doing that, they can contact the folks by sending an email to Burlingtonpantry@gmail.com. So I'm going to say that one more time. Burlingtonpantry@gmail.com. If there's people in the community that have time, Monday and Wednesday would be between nine AM and two PM. And then Tuesday, it's nine AM to seven PM. And Thursday, it's nine AM to noon. So if you have any of those timeframes where you're available to go over to help, please send an email. Don't just go over there, but send an email, tell them your availability, and they're looking for some more bodies, again, for their general food pantry distribution. We're doing pretty well with the lunch program for kids volunteers at this point.
Thank you. Um, any, so Dr. Conti, would you like to continue then?
I would, Madam Chair. I'm just not sure if any of the other committee members have any questions about the delivery of food in particular.
Yes. Would Mrs. Monaco?
I just want to know, and I may have missed what Patrick said. I just want to know if we are continuing to send food over there or not.
Mr. Larkin?
So we don't have, we haven't recently, we can, again, I spoke to Cheryl Barnes today and told her whatever they need, whether it's food resources, human bodies to help, transportation. The one thing I'm going to talk to Mr. Cuna following the meeting is they could use some storage space, is the one thing. They're getting some large donations at this point, and some of their space is maxed out. So we'll be talking about accommodating that within the school system. So we haven't, but we can, is the answer to that question, Mrs. Monaco.
So I noticed online there's a big push for donations, and there was one individual who was questioning why the schools weren't helping instead of donations being made to buy food. So I just wanted to be able to set that straight.
Again, my conversations with them are that the resources are not spread too thin right now. That hasn't come up in our conversations, and I would encourage people that have questions about the school's involvement to reach out to the schools or to reach out to the Food Pantry directly and not to make, you know, conjecture at this point.
Okay, thanks.
All set, Mrs. Monaco?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Murphy, do you have any questions or comments? If you can turn your microphone on.
I'm all set, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Russo?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Nelson?
I'm all set as well. Thank you very much for that report, Patrick. Very encouraging.
Thank you. All right. And shall we go back to you, Eric?
Yes. So again, the first week was really about basic needs. So I know there are a lot of people reaching out to do some initial connections. So we had a lot of teachers reaching out and making some connections. But I think that, um, what we also then had to determine is which students needed devices so that we could make those connections. So the district sent out a notification, and so our next sort of action was to create the, a way to get students' devices that could connect to the Internet. So with that, again, Patrick, I think that occurred on Wednesday and Thursday. And Patrick can talk about some of the details, but I wanted to make sure I thank our technology team, who was in and organized all of these pickups at different schools and disinfected all the devices, and I think just did a remarkable job. So Patrick, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, if you could ask Patrick, that would be great.
Yes. Patrick, can you fill us in some more on this?
Sure. I want to thank Bob, of course, Bob Cuna, who was there to support this. And if I forget anybody, Bob, let us know. The other folks that were involved were Jose D'Souza, Eric Calandrello, Theo Goulis. Dave Camalingo was nice enough to open up the middle school for us and support our needs there. And so we spent the day on Friday, pretty much from, geez, I think we met there around nine AM, and we were there till mid-afternoon. And that team of folks went around to all of our schools and gathered up the devices that people had requested via the online form, because, you know, we went through a bunch of different scenarios. What's the easiest way to get these devices out? Do we want to start setting new devices up for, you know, elementary students have different things than middle school students might have on their devices? So ultimately, from an ownership standpoint or a responsibility standpoint, we thought that to give the kids their own devices that they were familiar with, they were already signed into all the resources they would need. And then when we do come back to school, the students will just bring those devices back to their own classrooms. Would make things a lot more, you know, easy from a management standpoint. So that was the way we went about it. So after Friday, we sent out a kind of another version of our responsibility form that we use when we send devices home at the high school for all the folks that had requested devices. We didn't want to be having people handle pens and passing paper back and forth. So we did an electronic sign-off for families to fill out before they came and picked up their devices. We ran from nine AM, no, ten AM to one PM, and we handed out about two hundred devices. So we had to move all the devices from the middle school over to the high school. Our concern was if we had any kind of backup, you know, in the circle. We didn't want traffic to be onto Wind Street. So we moved it to the high school. That way, if there was any type of backup, it would be in the circle and wouldn't be anywhere near a road. And we handed them out through the auditorium. We had some walkie-talkies out there that Mr. Cunas had provided us with, where we would call in the name of the person pulling up. Somebody inside the auditorium would grab those devices and in a charging cord, and we would then have somebody run it out to the vehicle that had pulled up. It went a lot smoother than I thought it would, and I thank the families for their patience. And I really thank the staff that put in all that time and effort. And I want to thank Bob Ganley and some of the custodial crew at the high school, who also helped us at the same time. In that same circle, we had a number of high school students picking up band instruments. So we didn't have kids coming into the school. We had Mr. Sullivan and some other staff that were going into the band room, to the lockers where the kids had left their things and bringing them out to the kids. Just that we didn't want to have anybody getting too close to anyone else, and we wanted to keep everything outside of the building. So that was, that was interesting to see that all happen, but it went really smoothly. And again, thanks to all the staff that made that happen on Monday.
Wow.
And I forgot one person, a very important person. I always forget her, and you always forget the most important person. In my life, my school life, is my secretary, Rosemary D'Souza, who was also there helping to hand out devices. And she did a lot of the correspondence with families for us to make sure that we did as well as possible in our communication back and forth during that.
Great. Well, thank you. It sounds like it was incredibly well thought through and organized, and it sounds like a lot of people contributed to making it work well, including the band instruments. So thank you.
Well, just to Eric's, to Eric's point earlier, Dr. Conti, I just want to say if, as we think about, and I don't want to jump ahead, but as we think about getting to more formal, more structured learning opportunities for our kids, it wouldn't really be fair to start those if we had two hundred students at home who didn't have what they needed to start that formal learning. So aside from the check-ins and taking this slow and making sure people's health needs are met and making sure people have what they need to start was a priority. So that also, I wanted to make sure I mentioned.
Well, thank you to all of you. In terms of other comments or questions, Ms. Russo, do you have any questions?
Not at this time, but thank you for all the work.
Okay, Mr. Nelson? I'm sorry, your microphone appears to be on mute. Can you unmute it?
I'm just wondering, Patrick, did we have funding, or Bob, do we have funding in our budget for those? Or were they donated? Where did the resources come from for the two hundred computers?
Mr. Larkin, can you answer that?
Sure. Those are, again, we took those devices from the classrooms. So just as a reminder to people that might not be aware, we're one-to-one at the high school, and the devices travel in and out of school. Kate, the kindergartners have carts. The preschool has carts where iPads are shared. The, our grades one through five, one through eight, all have their own iPads, but they stay in their classrooms or homerooms. We don't allow them to go home. But given the fact that we're going to be having some remote resources posted, or we do have them posted, we wanted to make sure that every student that needed one had a device where they could access those resources.
I see. So they're kind of on loan? Is that what we're doing?
Correct.
Okay. Very good. That's an excellent, excellent approach. Thank you for that.
All set. Mr. Nelson? Okay, Mrs. Monaco?
I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Murphy?
I'm all set.
Okay. I would just like to add that for anyone who knows of someone who didn't hear about that, and they know of children, students and families that still need access to a device in order to access our, any remote learning that is getting started, or even the contacts, please get in touch at the phone number on, what's the phone number again, Mr. Larkin? Do you have it in front of you or no?
I don't. I would prefer they just send me an email, honestly. Larkin@bpsk12.org, and we will try to come up with a plan. We're not in the schools daily, but we will, we will do everything we can to get them what they need.
Okay.
And the other thing I just want to mention is, we really appreciate the fact that, I know it would be great for every kid in your house to have a device. It might be convenient. I have kids in my house, so to be able to give them all a device and say, "Don't bother me for an hour." I've done that. Sorry to make that confession here today. But it's helpful to us if we don't have to provide one device for every student. So again, we just, we appreciate folks that didn't. It would have been easy for all of our families to ask for devices. So we're really trying to prioritize. If they need something, we will do, we'll make every effort to get it to them. If they don't need a device for every child in their house, we would appreciate them not asking for one.
Yes, and in particular, I would, you know, this would be for people who don't have access to this, the Internet without these devices. So I also, I had heard that there was at least one Internet company that might be offering free Internet for a couple of months. Do you know anything about that, Patrick?
I think there are multiple. The one that I know a lot about, and Bob may have more info, or, because I think he might have shared it with me at one point as well, was the Comcast Essentials. I'm not sure if people are having trouble with that. We will do everything we can to help navigate that situation for them. So again, if people are aware of folks, this is, this seems like a contradiction, that can't get Internet access. If they could try to email me as well, I'm guessing, I could be wrong here, that most people have a phone that they might be able to send an email through. And, you know, just get in touch with us if somebody's having a lot of trouble getting connected to the Internet, and we'll do what we can to support that as well.
Thank you. Yes, I just want to be sure that people who don't have these resources can somehow be found out by other people who are watching this meeting or on the, on the website or other, other resources, other ways of knowing about it. Any other members who want to ask a question or make a comment? Are there others, other comments from other people regarding this topic? Okay, back to you, Eric.
Okay, so I do want to make sure I recognize the town manager, Paul Sagarino. He's been great at communicating some of the changes that are occurring at Town Hall and processing things like paychecks and other, other essentials that you don't realize are sort of the background. What happens in the background, you don't realize how important it is until that background gets disrupted. So I might want to make sure I thank, thank him. And I do want to make sure I recognize Barbara Conley, our nurse leader. I think Barbara, I heard today that she delivered a thousand masks from the school district and twenty-five hundred pairs of gloves to the Burlington Fire Department for their use, or they can distribute to Leahy or do whatever they want with them. But we felt they were in better use with people who need them right away. So I wanted to recognize her efforts coming in and sharing some of the school supplies with some, with some first responders.
Great.
So that really was, the first week was, I'm going to call sort of safety and connectivity. There's been a lot of work done in between districts and a lot of collaboration. So the decision to initially close was, was a collaboration. And we've been working on a vision statement for what education is going to look at. We're also getting guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And I think we're, we're ready to sort of start the more, as Patrick said, the structural learning opportunities are going to begin to expand, especially if the closure of school continues. But we feel like, again, we have some of the basic, basic needs met. And so in the next few days, family and staff will be getting from us a, more of a remote learning plan that will put some structure into what our expectations are going to be. And we feel like that learning is going to start in full on Monday, March thirtieth. I do want to say we still have to have conversations with Diana and the Teachers Union to make sure that we're all moving in the, in the same direction. And also, I've been having daily conversations with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the Commissioner about what the expectations of the department are going to be moving forward. But what I can say is, in Burlington, we're going to continue to focus on the social-emotional development of students, making sure that they are feeling connected. We're going to focus on deeper learning. Our intention is not to try to replicate a classroom in a digital setting. We'll never be able to do what we do in the brick-and-mortar classrooms online, so we're not even going to try to do that. We are not planning on moving forward with sort of new content information, like new state standards and scope and sequence. I think that would be unfair to many of our students and unfair to our parents to have to deliver that, and unfair to our teachers to, again, try to replicate what's happening in their classrooms. again, try to replicate what's happening in their classrooms. So, we're going to be using, again, putting together a plan where we feel like we can create some deeper learning opportunities, some great connections, and we'll keep kids, students engaged with some of that learning and, and getting some feedback from teachers. Again, not grading, but feedback from teachers moving forward. I'm saying all this with the caveat that the landscape is changing daily, sometimes even more frequently than that. And we're trying to communicate those changes to families as, as best we can. The main source of our communication is through our, through our website, and we're continuing to add resources. And when we put this plan together, the plan is going to be located on the website as well. So, we're going to sort of articulate what, what our expectations for the learning are moving forward. And we're trying to put that vision together within Burlington, but we're also working across the Middlesex League with some of our colleagues. So, we're trying to minimize the comparisons. Oh, this is what they're doing, this is what they're doing, because we're, we're all trying to, as the saying goes, build the airplane as we're, as we're taking off. And I think we're all trying to learn from each other, share resources, and make sure the kids are feeling connected, safe, and that they're continuing to learn moving forward. So, the next few days should be telling. And I also believe in the next few days, we'll have a better understanding as to whether the school stoppage is going to end or is going to continue, continue for longer. And so, I think we're, we're, we still have some missing information that, that we're responding to. But again, the initial, the initial response from the district and from district staff has been on the health and safety of kids and making sure they're prepared for the next phase, which is going to be more of the structured, remote learning phase. And that doesn't mean that our teachers haven't been active. I think that all of our staff have been incredibly active in terms of reaching out to their kids. I've been shared on lots of videos where kids are sending, you know, videos of themselves dancing to their teachers, and the teachers are reading stories back to the kids. Then I know there's been a lot of communication at all levels with our teachers and their students. So, I just want to make sure I'm commending everybody. No one is sort of sitting around and, and not doing anything. Everyone is engaged and helping and trying to make the best of the situation. So, Patrick, I'm not sure if you want to add anything to that, but I've just been really impressed with the amount of sort of connection that's happening with our teachers and students so far.
Yes, do you want to add to that, Patrick?
No, I just, I just want to reiterate, our teachers have really been doing a lot behind the scenes. They're really concerned about their kids. I've had emails from teachers who are just really distraught for the void they're feeling right now. I know it seems, it's, it's hard to believe, like, we've been away for two weeks. If we were away for two weeks in the summer, you know, it wouldn't be like this. The rug was literally yanked from under us, and we're all feeling that. So, we appreciate everybody's patience. But we're all dealing with this loss, and we're all trying to get our feet back under us and make sure everybody's okay and to pick it up as much as we can next week and get used to this new reality we're dealing with. And, yeah. And the other thing I wanted to mention, I know we're also making attempts at the counseling level to reach out to students that we know might need even more support from us during this time. So, there's a lot happening behind the scenes. And again, our teachers should be commended for all the work they're doing. I think we're working more than we ever have, and we're sleeping less because we're really concerned about our kids.
Thank you. Just, are there any members who have any questions or comments? Mr. Murphy?
No, thanks.
Mr. Nelson?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Russo?
I just want to say thank you to everybody that's been working so hard through this time.
Ms. Monaco?
Yes, I witnessed my grandson on a Zoom call with his kindergarten class and teacher the other day. And they were thoroughly enjoying getting together.
Okay, Eric, moving on. What do we got next? Are you there, Eric? Dr. Conti?
Yes, I'm sorry. I think I shared with committee earlier today that there's some emergency legislation pending that would grant the Commissioner authorities that he doesn't currently have. And those authorities would include suspending state testing and some other questions that a lot of parents and students and teachers have. So, I think eventually this, the decision will be relatively straightforward. The hard part is creating all of the authority and changing the legislation to allow that decision to be made. So, that's really what we've been working on behind the scenes. So, I don't have an answer on M-CAS yet. I know many of you have asked me that. But I think the groundwork is being laid at the state level to give the Commissioner the authority to make that decision. So, I think, again, we should know more, I think, in the coming days or even in the coming weeks or so. That's not our primary reason for doing anything, but just we've gotten a lot of calls about, about state, about state testing. And I just wanted to make sure I answered the committee's concerns and shared the latest legislative update. So, again, things with the, in the policy environment are changing very rapidly. And I think we're going to be sort of moving into our next phase. And then, in the, in the next couple of days, determining whether we're going to be back at school sooner or we're going to have an extended absent, an extended absence moving forward. So, I think that information will be coming very, probably by the end of the week.
Okay, that's very helpful. Do any members have any questions on that? Ms. Monaco?
No, I'm all set.
Ms. Russo?
No, thank you.
Nelson?
No, thank you.
Murphy?
All set.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving along. What do you have next for us, Eric?
I think we can move on to the, in next item in the agenda.
You mean the old business?
Yes.
Okay, well, there were a couple of things here that you may or may not know the answer to, but I, I'd like to address them since they were posted for the agenda. Is there anything to be said about attendance requirements?
Sure, I can mention that. That's one of the changes that's been waived by the Commissioner. The attendance requirements for the district in terms of our accountability, the, they will be ended at the beginning of March prior to the closing. So, none of the, the, the lack of attendance now isn't going to harm any district.
Okay. And what about April Vacation Week?
April Vacation Week, I think we're going to know more in the next few days. But as I conveyed to the school committee, my intention would be, unless directed by the governor, that we would continue to have April, April break if we return to school.
Okay, and we hope to know more about that by the end of the week, based on what the state is requiring for other, for school closures in general. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And we already had listed at our last meeting, the last day of school. If you could repeat for people, the last day of school, regardless of the closures, is going to be
Wednesday, June 24th, our 185th day. The Commissioner is not requiring any district to make up any time more than the 185-day requirement that we had already established.
Okay, thank you. The next item was learning at home, and I think you've addressed that. And it sounds like that start, we're hoping that starting next Monday, there will be a little bit more of a structured learning at home. That, is it my understanding that there will be grades, but rather as much learning as possible? Is that what you were trying to convey?
Yeah, as much connection as possible. We're going to add some specificity to that in the coming days. So, again, I think that what we said was basic needs first, health needs first, and now we're going to expand some of the remote learning opportunities beginning on Monday.
Okay. And field trips, is there anything to be said on that?
No, we're, they're done for now.
Okay, I, I know. It's just on the agenda, so I just want to address all of them. And the last thing on the agenda is staying safe. And I think that I just want to commend all of you for modeling really good staying safe behaviors with the care you've taken in the distributing of food and the distributing of devices and the disinfecting of things. And, you know, the high school staff, you know, arranging to have kids get their, their instruments without having to come in the building, et cetera. And I, I just commend you all for that modeling. And I appreciate everything that's being done. Is there anything you wanted to add to that, Eric?
No, just, again, similar gratitude. Everyone's been just working incredibly hard and just being really flexible and creative with their problem solving. So, I couldn't ask for, I couldn't ask for more.
Okay. I did want to add one more thing around updates, because I know that for high school juniors and seniors, this is an incredibly stressful time without the coronavirus. And I'm sure it's additionally stressful. And I know that the high school guidance department and the high school have a lot of resources available. And just want to encourage you all to take advantage of the staff and the resources that are there and to take a deep breath, because every other student in the country is in the same boat. And you're going to get through it. We're all going to get through it. So, I just wanted to remind people that we'll get through all the different pieces of this. No matter what level you're at, it's stressful. So, thank you all for hanging in there. Is, are there any committee members who would like to make any additional comments or questions at this time? Tom?
All set, thank you.
Chris?
All set.
Kristen?
All set.
Even?
All set.
Okay, thank you. So, now, moving on to the next part of our agenda is our old business. We have a couple of items that were presented previously that are here for second readings. And the first one is the 10-year capital plan discussion. And I want Dr. Conti or Mr. Kuna, who would be presenting this?
Again, I can start, I can start, Madam Chair, is, again, you've seen the capital plan as a 10-year plan. It's a document that changes all the time. So, this vote is not meant to signify that the plan won't be changing. I just wanted to present it to the committee and have the committee have some thoughts on it and just to, basically, every couple of years, make sure we stop and, and just take a vote on the plan. So, again, I just want to reiterate that this vote does not mean the plan is not going to be a dynamic document or be changing. The whole point of the 10-year capital plan is to be fluid and to make sure that we continue to express our needs on it. So, Madam Chair, Bob may want to add something to that, but that was the intention of the first reading.
Okay. Mr. Kuna, do you have something to add to that?
Again, the only thing I did want to add is just to stress the fact that this is a fluid document. So, what was actually sent to the committee in weeks past is not what's actually currently on the 10-year plan. It's been updated. Ms. Kosher as well is also changing the format on that to more align with what the town's using. So, that way, we have similar-looking 10-year plans. Of course, as the financial person of the district as well, too, making sure that all the numbers that we're asking for jive, to make sure that they're in line as they should be. So, like I said, the document that you have, as Eric mentioned, is fluid. And I think if you would ask me today and tomorrow and two weeks from now, you'd see new things come on the 10-year capital plan and things come off of it. But again, the intention is really to understand that we can't predict the future, but we can anticipate. And whether we do actually vote tonight on the 10-year plan or push that off, it's not exactly voting on the document itself, more the intention and the concept of the idea of 10-year plan that was presented.
I'd like to suggest, I, I did go over it extensively with Mr. Kuna, and I know it is in flux, but I believe it does include our big needs for the next 10 years in terms of buildings. It includes a lot of the repairs and upgrades that were indicated to us in our 10-year master plan, our master plan that came out about two or three years ago. It addresses a lot of the needs of the, the school district in a forward-looking manner. And so, I would entertain, if the members are, are also in agreement, a motion to support the 10-year capital plan as is being currently used and worked on and updated by the business office. Is there a member who would like to add a comment or make a motion?
I'll make the motion, Madam Chair, that we approve the 10-year capital plan as presented.
And that's Mr. Nelson?
Nelson, yes.
Second, Mrs. Russo?
Are there any comments or questions that people would like to add at this point? Tom?
No, I would support voting it this evening. I think we went over it a bit last meeting. And as Bob said, it's a fluid plan anyway, but I think it's important to get the concept in place. But one thing I just wanted to ask, Martha, a little off-point.
Okay.
I'm just reading through the agenda as we're sitting here. And under public participation, there's a, in parentheses, it says to eliminate public participation, vote to temporarily suspend policy BE DH. I don't know if that's something that's required by any, or whomever, but I
Okay.
I don't know if we formally have to do that at some point in the, in the process, but I just don't want to forget it.
I don't want to forget it. Why don't we finish this item and I will go back. I, I actually, because I wrote myself some notes under number two, I did see it, which is, it was number three. So, maybe we should just do it now then. Thank you for pointing that out. Under number three, after our updates, it is listed for us to address the issue of public participation. And I would accept a motion to temporarily suspend policy BE DH, which is public participation at school meetings and executive orders by the governor and the current situation.
Madam Chair, this is Steve Nelson speaking. I'll withdraw my prior motion, and I will replace it with a motion that the committee vote to temporarily, temporarily suspend policy BE DH, which allows for public participation at school committee meetings.
Second.
I will second that.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone who has further comment on that? Okay, we need to take a roll call vote. Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes, yes.
Monaco?
Aye, yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
The chair votes aye, so that's 5-0-0. Thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. And, Mr. Nelson, would you, now going back to our old business of the 10-year capital plan, would you like to propose a motion? Oh, you're, excuse me, you'll have to start again, because you've got yourself on mute there. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Madam Chair, this is Steve Nelson. I will renew my prior motion that the school committee vote to approve the 10-year capital plan as submitted.
Second, Mrs. Russo?
Thank you. If there's any further comment, please let me know.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Eiler.
Yeah, I'm not sure that anyone on Ways and Means received a copy of that plan. Is it possible for us to get a hold of that?
Mr. Kuna, can you respond to that?
So, yes, I believe we passed them out at the actual meeting. I didn't email them to anybody, but I can do that. The one other comment I'd like to make is, Mr. Nelson's motion is as presented. If we could amend that to say, as the one being worked on will be presented. So, once Ms. Kosher has that updated, that will be the one that would be voted in.
Not sure we can vote on something that's not finalized, Bob. Maybe we should postpone the motion until you and Nicole have finalized the numbers.
Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering aloud. This capital plan is going to be changed by Bob and Nicole and Eric probably multiple times going forward. It's a fluid document. So, I look at this as more, we're approving the, the concept of a capital plan, and we had one presented to us at the first reading last time. The fact that that's going to look different a week from now, or two weeks from now, or a month from now, I, I just, I, I don't think we have to come back and re-vote this every time they take something off or something on. So, I'll do whatever, I'll do whatever committee wishes, but I wonder if we could just approve what the motion says, because that's what's before us. And if the, if the cap, if the 10-year plan change is going if the, if the cap, if the 10-year plan change is going forward, it changes.
I'd like to suggest perhaps we could amend the motion to say as a working document.
Okay.
Are you comfortable to amend your motion, Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, I'm willing to do that, Madam Chair. The motion will be to approve the 10-year plan as presented with the understanding that it's a working document and it's likely to change going forward.
Okay, and do we need a second on that?
Second.
That's Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any, and Mr. Eiler, again, this is a working document, and I, I did think that there was some hard copies handed out at our last physical meeting, but, Mr. Kuna, you'll be able to share that with Mr. Eiler and all of the Ways and Means Committee after the meeting?
Yeah, I think the hard copy was to the school committee members, but Ways and Means didn't receive any.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. Again, it's a working document, so if there are issues that you folks find, please let us know. Are there any other Ways and Means Committee members who would like to comment before we vote on this? Or was that all you had to say, Mr. Eiler? I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Are there other Ways and Means Committee members or other people who would like to comment on this before we call the vote? Okay, for roll call vote, Ms. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Monaco?
Aye.
Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so that's five zero zero. Thank you very much. The next item is the warrant articles. Again, this is a second reading, and, Mr. Kuna, or Mr. Dr. Conti, if you want to make a summary, we have, we looked at these last time. I don't know if you can put up the summary of the warrant articles on the screen, so if there's somebody who's watching this, they would see which ones we're referring to, that would be helpful. So, Mr. Dr. Conti, would you like to begin this, or? Mr. Kuna?
Again, I would just say that, I would just say, Bob, I'll let you do the details, but the, the list from the last meeting has not changed, so we're presenting with you $1.6 million worth of capital projects. So Bob, with that, I'll let you go through them.
So that's what I was going to state, pretty much word for word, what Eric just mentioned. So what was presented at the last meeting has not been changed. What has been provided is the backup document, which includes quotes, estimates, pictures of, let's say, broken or damaged equipment, and then summaries of the need for either the upgrade, the replacement, or the new purchases. I can definitely spend time going through all of them. I can make a recap, or if there's a recommendation that I take questions first, maybe the chair could comment if she would like me to go one through one.
Maybe we could have, we could go article by article, and that way each member and us, the Ways and Means people can comment if needed on each one, and then we can have the motions, because I know we need to read these, each of these motions for the vote. Does that sound like it'll work, Mr. Kuna?
Yes.
Okay. So would you introduce, actually, so I'd like suggestions, should we propose a motion first or just have the conversation first? Anybody have any input on that?
Steve Nelson here, Madam Chair. My suggestion would be that we start with a motion, and once that motion is seconded, rather than that Bob regurgitate what he said at the last meeting, we were all here for the last meeting, just have questions, if anybody has any questions based on the backup.
With that, are there other committee members who would like to handle it a different way?
No, I agree with Steve.
Okay. Okay, so I would entertain a motion for Article 2101.
Madam Chair, Steve Nelson, I would make a motion that the committee approve the submission of capital warrant article 21-01 for interactive technology in the amount of $85,000.
Second.
And do we need to read this motion to see, Mr. Nelson, do you have that wording in front of you?
The backup motion language is to see if the town will vote to appropriate $85,000 or some other amount to be expended at the direction of the school committee to purchase interactive technology, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and to determine whether such amount should be raised by taxation, transfer from available funds, by borrowing or otherwise, or to take any other action relative thereto.
So there's a motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Russo. So now, if there are questions, Mr. Nelson, do you have any questions on this warrant article?
I do not, Madam Chair. The backup explained it quite well. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Murphy?
No, thank you.
Ms. Russo?
No, not this time, thank you.
Ms. Monaco?
All set.
Okay, what about Mr. Eiler?
All good.
Okay, are there other Ways and Means Committee members? Mrs. Harrigan?
All set, thank you.
And Mrs. Creeden?
All set, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further comment, I will call this vote, and again, in roll call. Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Monaco?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Russo?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so that's five zero zero. So, the next, I would entertain a motion for the next warrant article 2102.
Madam Chair, Steve Nelson, I make a motion that school committee approve Article 21-02 for submission to town meeting for the Marshall Simons boiler repair in the amount of $125,000, and the language of the warrant will read as follows, "to see if the town will vote to appropriate $125,000 or some other amount to be expended at the direction of the school committee to pay for the repair of a faulty boiler and other HVAC system, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and to determine whether such amount should be raised by taxation, transfer from available funds, by borrowing or otherwise, or to take any other action relative thereto."
Second.
That's Mrs. Russo. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? And I'm going to, you know what I'm going to do? I'm going to start doing it in the same order, so people, there's a lot of these to go through, try to go through them a little more quickly, and I'm going to go in the order of Mrs. Russo, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Murphy, Ms. Monaco, and then myself. Mrs. Russo?
No.
Okay. Steve, questions?
No questions, Madam Chair.
No, just a blanket statement to say that, we reviewed these pretty thoroughly a couple of weeks ago. We've all, we've all seen them, I think we've probably all looked at the numbers, we know the, the needs. I'm in favor of all the warrant articles as presented, so I'm not going to.
So that would be a way for us to?
I'm not going to require any questions on any of these warrant articles, from my standpoint.
Okay. And Ms. Monaco?
All set, agree with Tom.
Okay. Mrs. Russo, would you like me to continue to call on you on these? Mrs. Russo? All right, would you like me to continue to call on you for questions?
You cut out, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Would you like me to, did you hear what Mr. Murphy said?
Yes.
Okay, would you like, or do you feel the same way, or would you like me to continue to ask you for questions and comments?
No, I've looked through these.
On the warrant articles, and Mr. Nelson?
I agree with what Mr. Murphy said, Madam Chair.
Okay, so I will do that and just use this order for our vote, but I will ask now, Mr. Eiler, if you will have, if you have any comments or questions on this item or any other of the warrant articles that we'll be voting on tonight.
I don't have any on this one. I do have a number of other questions that came up. The big difference from the previous meeting is we have the backup, so the questions are largely related to that.
Okay, so when we get to those, I will call you, on you first, since other, the members don't have a question on those. And I, Mrs. Harrigan, would you also like me to call on you?
I don't think you'll, I'll need that, thank you though.
Okay, Mrs. Creeden?
I don't think I'll need it.
Okay, that's fine. I'm trying to streamline as much as I can, and if something comes up and people feel the need, please let me know that you'd like to speak as well, okay? So we are, we have a motion and a second for Article 2102, and I will now call the vote. And so, Kristen?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, so that's five zero zero for Article 2102. Article 2103, I would entertain a motion.
I'll continue on, Madam Chair, if no one has any objection. I move that the committee approve Article 21-03 varsity field turf replacement in the amount of $500,000, with the text of the warrant article to read as follows, "to see if the town will vote to appropriate $500,000 or some other amount to be expended at the direction of the school committee to pay for the replacement of varsity turf field, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and to determine whether such amount should be raised by taxation, transfer from available funds, by borrowing or otherwise, or to take any other action relative thereto."
Thank you for the motion.
Second, Mrs. Russo.
Thank you. Mr. Eiler, do you have any questions or comments on this one?
Yes, please. And I'll try to streamline a little bit here. A lot of them I have sort of the same question. So on, on this one and a number of others, the quote is for more than the requested amount, so it's, it's unclear, you know, was something cut out, is there some other smaller quote, or, you know, I'm just thinking ahead to town meeting, if this is the same backup, people will be a little confused seeing quotes that are above what you're requesting.
Okay. Kuna, can you respond?
Yes. So, Mr. Eiler, into the board, I'm sorry, the committee, so the quotes that we have or that I presented in some of the backups, there are some upgrades that are available, if you would call them that. So some of the vendors that provide us with these estimates offer additional items or what they would call enhancements for the field. We are not looking to add any of those so-called enhancements to the field, so it'd be a direct replacement, which is why the estimates are higher, to answer your question for other ones. And depending on the numbers that we needed, I may have asked for a higher quantity of, let's say, a particular part, and then once knowing what numbers we had to work with for warrant articles, I may have had to reduce those numbers in order to fit. But in this particular one, there are some enhancements that we would not be taking on the field.
Okay, so just for reference, you know, I know on this one you had discussed some things you're, you're cutting out at the last meeting, but, you know, for instance, on Article 4 to music, same thing, Article 5, the audio, same thing, and Article 10, all those have quotes that are above what you're requesting. So I guess it might be helpful in the backup for town meeting to, you know, just indicate what, what you're paring down, so it's clear what people are actually voting for.
Understood, thank you.
Do you know any?
Thank you.
Thank you. Does that resolve your concerns and questions, Mr. Eiler?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, then unless someone else has a comment, I will call the vote. Kristen?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so that's five zero zero. I will entertain a motion for Article 2104. Mr. Nelson?
Madam Chair, Steve Nelson here. I move that the committee approve the submission of Article 21-04 for music department installs and upgrades in the amount of $50,000, with the text of the article, warrant article to read as follows, "to see if the town will vote to appropriate $50,000 or some other amount to be expended at the direction of the school committee to purchase sound dampening and safety equipment, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and to determine whether such amount should be raised by taxation, transfer from available funds, by borrowing or otherwise, or to take any other action relative thereto."
Second, Mrs. Russo.
Thank you. Are there any further comments, Mr. Eiler, or anyone else?
No question.
Okay. I do want to point out, this is the article that includes a safety net for the orchestra pit, which, you know, we do try to be sure we're keeping track of the safety issues, and that's part of this warrant article, but it feels to me very, very important. So I will call the vote on Article 2104. Kristen?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that's five zero zero. Thank you. So I'll entertain a motion on Article 2105.
Madam Chair, I move that the committee vote to approve the submission of Article 21-05 audio technology replacement in the amount of $100,000, with the text of, with the text of the article to read as follows, "to see if the town will vote to appropriate $100,000 or some other amount to be expended at the direction of the school committee to purchase district-wide classroom audio equipment, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and to determine whether such amount should be raised by taxation, transfer from available funds, by borrowing or otherwise, or to take any other action relative thereto."
Second, Mrs. Russo.
Are there any further comments from any participants of the meeting tonight?
A quick question?
Yes, Mr. Eiler.
What classrooms will be using this? A look at the quote suggests, I think there's 60 items of the main audio system. I was just curious, what classrooms will be covered?
This is mostly for the middle school and for Memorial, but then there's also, and I'll, I'll fill in the details in a second, but then there's also two classrooms at the high school and a few classrooms at one of our elementary schools. And the reason Marshall Simons and Memorial is, again, I'm going to stress that these buildings are between eight and nine years old, which is not old as far as the building goes. It's slightly old in the way the technology is. When the sound systems were installed then, they use a different technology, so now it's difficult to get replacement mics and amplifiers that work with the current system. So the reason you see multiple parts in there is some is replacing just the microphone, some is replacing the amplifiers, and some's replacing the whole systems with the new microphone and amplifier. So it is a mixture of multiple parts and full systems, primarily in Marshall Simons and Memorial.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Eiler, that answered your question?
Yes, thanks.
I also want to point out, and I want to, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Kuna, but these are amplifier systems that are needed for students with special needs and perhaps other uses. So these are required pieces of equipment that allow a teacher to speak in their normal voice in a way that each student in their classroom can understand very clearly how, what the teacher's saying, how they're speaking. If they're not working properly, then some of our students are not going to have access to the curriculum and the instruction. So these are our basic equipment, they're not just, oh, some kind of extra thing that we do. These are required audio technology for our students to learn and have access to the curriculum. Is that correct, Mr. Kuna?
I would definitely say that. In most cases, these are required, but I would not, I would not put these on the, on the not needed side, even for the students that do not have special needs or hearing needs. They do benefit from this technology in the classroom.
So I will now, any other comments from anyone on this article, and I will call the vote? Kristen?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that's five zero zero. Okay, I will entertain a motion for Article 210- Okay, I will entertain a motion for Article 2106.
Madam Chair, Steve Nelson, I move that the committee vote to approve the submission of Article 21-06 Marshall Simons Middle School Auditorium Equipment and Safety Upgrades in the amount of $350,000 with the text of the warrant article to read as follows. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $350,000 or some other amount to be expended at the direction of the school committee to purchase auditorium equipment and safety upgrades at Marshall Simons, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and to determine whether such amount should be raised by taxation, transferred from available funds by borrowing or otherwise, or to take any other action relative thereto.
Second, Mrs. Russo.
Okay. Is there anyone, Mr. Eiler, do you have any questions on this one?
All good, thank you.
Okay, any further comments or questions? Seeing none, I will call the vote. Kristen?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That's five zero zero. Thank you. Okay, I would entertain a motion for Article 2107.
Madam Chair, Steve Nelson, I move that the committee vote to approve the submission of Article 21-07 Memorial Playground Resurface in the amount of $50,000 with the text of the warrant to read as follows. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $50,000 or some other amount to be expended at the direction of the school committee to resurface the memorial playground, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and to determine whether such amount should be raised by taxation, transferred from available funds by borrowing or otherwise, or to take any other action relative thereto.
Second, Mrs. Russo.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments, Mr. Eiler? I think that's a no. You had your microphone muted.
Sorry, no problem. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments before we vote on this one? Seeing none, I would take a vote, and that's Kristen?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That's five zero zero. I'd entertain a motion for Article 2108.
Madam Chair, Steve Nelson, I move that the committee vote to approve the submission of Article 21-08 for Marshall Simons Exterior Bathroom in the amount of $25,000 with the text of the warrant to read as follows. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $25,000 or some other amount to be expended at the direction of the school committee to renovate two exterior bathrooms at Marshall Simons, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and to determine whether such amount should be raised by taxation, transferred from available funds by borrowing or otherwise, or to take any other action relative thereto.
Second, Mrs. Russo.
Thank you. Mr. Eiler, do you have any questions on this article?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments on this article? Seeing none, I will take the vote on this motion. Kristen?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That's five zero zero. Thank you. Okay, I'll accept a motion on Article 2109.
Madam Chair, Steve Nelson, I move that the committee vote to submit Article 21-09 for the water bubbler replacement in the amount of $50,000 with the text of the warrant article to read as follows. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $50,000 or some other amount to be expended at the direction of the school committee to purchase and install water dispensing units, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and to determine whether such amount should be raised by taxation, transferred from available funds by borrowing or otherwise, or to take any other action relative thereto.
Second, Mrs. Russo.
Thank you. Mr. Eiler?
Yes.
Any questions on this?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The quote describes the plumbing costs, but suggests there might be other costs. And it's not clear from the article how many of these we're talking about.
Mr. Kuna, can you respond, please?
Yeah, so the first part of that question is, is that we do have an in-house electrician. So any electrical costs would be not, we would not be asking for additional monies for. The second part of that is the unit that's in the backup material. The quote is for one of those complete, so we can get 16 of those. The thing is, is that at our elementary schools in particular, and our middle schools, we only have one of those bottle fill units, but we have multiple units right now that are just the standard bubbler style. So we would be upgrading those to the new units that you see in the picture. And then some units would just get the top installed on them as well, too. So we're looking at about 16 units to be upgraded.
Okay, great. It might be good just to add that in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any further questions from anyone on this article? Seeing none, I would enter, no, we have the motion. So the vote is, Kristen?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. That passes five zero zero. Thank you. Okay, I would entertain a motion for Article 2110.
Madam Chair, Steve Nelson, I move that the committee vote to approve the submission of Article 21-10 for security camera replacement and upgrades in the amount of $75,000 with the text of the warrant article to read as follows. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $75,000 or some other amount to be expended at the direction of the school committee to purchase and install new and replacement security cameras and systems, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and to determine whether such amount should be raised by taxation, transferred from available funds, borrowing or otherwise, or to make any other action or take any other action relative thereto.
Second, Mrs. Russo.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments, Mr. Eiler?
Yes, please. I had a question just about one item on that. There's the 200 at $100 of the Genetech Advantage one year. Is that some kind of maintenance contract or something? Or it seems like a rather large fraction of the total.
Mr. Kuna, can you respond to that?
I'm just trying to look at which one that you're talking about to make sure that I'm giving you the right answer.
Sure, it's the $20,000 item that's three lines down.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So that is not a licensing. What that does is it allows you to have up to 200 cameras that centralize back to an alarm panel. So if an alarm is triggered, then what we can do is basically use cameras to talk to other cameras, basically to do motion. So the cameras themselves won't do motion, but let's say the first camera picks up the alarm. You can ask the second camera to then pick up the alarm as well, too. So maybe you'll get a continuous picture or frame of what's happening.
Okay, is that, it says one year on it. So is that an annual cost that will have to be built into the operating budget, then?
It would be something, yes. We carry a line item right now for security and licensing. So it is something that we continue.
Okay, so you've already seen that. Great, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments on this article? Hearing none, we'll vote. Kristen?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye, so that's five zero zero. Thank you, thank you. Now I would entertain a motion for Article 2111.
Madam Chair, Steve Nelson, I move that the committee vote to approve the submission of Article 21-11 for curriculum in the amount of $90,000 with the text of the warrant article to read as follows. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $90,000 or some other amount to be expended at the direction of the school committee to purchase new curriculum, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and to determine whether such amount should be raised by taxation, transferred from available funds by borrowing or otherwise, or to take any other action relative thereto.
Second, Russo.
Thank you. Eiler, do you have any questions on this article?
Yes, please. Is it clear what the ongoing annual cost of this would be? And has that been worked into the operating budget going forward?
Thank you, Mr. Kuna. Or actually, is that an answer, Dr. Conti, is that something for you to answer, or Mr. Kuna?
I'll jump in first, and if Dr. Conti wants to add. So these are built in in five-year blocks. So after five years, basically, you wouldn't lose the textbook, but you would lose the digital version of it. So the quotes that are shown here give you a digital and a paper version.
Okay, what's the expected lifespan of this, then?
That one I probably would have to defer. I mean, I'm sure that we have textbooks that are 20 years old. I don't want to make a judgment call on whether or not that's still good material. But I think five years is definitely a short time for a book to be relevant. So I don't think the paperback will go out of style in five years.
Okay, right, so it sounds like there may be something after the five-year period where we need to think about ongoing operating costs.
Mr. Kuna, do you have a response for that, or no?
Again, I mean, I think the way that the world is going now, there's a lot of digital content. I think it'd be unheard of us, unheard of us to have something built into our budget over the next five years to maintain that. But I also believe that I would like to see some structure changes in the way that books are purchased. Not from me, maybe from the textbook companies. So like I said, I do think that we'll probably build something into our budget to support this. But I won't know what that cost will be five years from now.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'd like to just ask, I don't have all the backup in front of me right now, but my memory is that this curriculum, and maybe Mr. Larkin or Mr. Purchase knows more, that this is because there was a big shift, a total change in the social studies curriculum?
Madam Chair, I got the signal back.
Oh, you're back. Good, okay, so we're...
But you're in the middle, so I don't want to interrupt, so please continue.
Well, my question is, is this, am I correct that this article, warrant article, is to address needs because of new standards in the middle school level, social studies required by the state? I don't know if Mr. Purchase or Mr. Larkin or you, Dr. Conti, want to respond to that.
Again, the short answer is yes, that there's a new civics requirement. But obviously, the present situation has derailed some of our, some of our efforts. So I think this would be really just a placeholder for us, and we're expecting that we have to do some significant curricular reorganization due to state changes in the standards.
Okay. All right, so does that fill the need for information on this warrant now? Are there any other questions on this warrant? Hearing none, then we'll take a vote. Kristen?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That's five zero zero. Thank you. I would entertain a motion on Article 2112.
Madam Chair, Steve Nelson, I move that the committee vote to approve the submission of Article 21-12 for design work in the amount of $100,000 with the text of the article to read as follows. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $100,000 or some other amount to be expended at the direction of the school committee to be used to contract design work, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and to determine whether such amount should be raised by taxation, transferred from available funds by borrowing or otherwise, or to take any other action relative thereto.
Second, Mrs. Russo.
Okay, are there any questions from you, Mr. Eiler?
No question, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? None, I will take the vote.
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That's five zero zero. Okay, the last article to vote on tonight is the non-capital warrant article, Community Custodial Services. Article 21-13.
Madam Chair, Steve Nelson, I move that the committee vote to approve the submission of Article 21-13 for community custodial services in the amount of $44,753.10. Not sure why the 10 cents is on there, but that's what it says. With the text of the warrant article to read as follows. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or otherwise provide the sum of $44,753.10 or any other sum extended under the direction of the Burlington School Committee for the purpose of community custodial fees for the events to be covered for Burlington Scout Organizations, PTO meetings, boosters, citations, youth basketball, youth volleyball, youth baseball association, Hopwana Hockey Soccer and Skating Associations, and for other not-for-profit Burlington civic organizations, and to act in any other manner thereto.
Second, Mrs. Russo.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Kuna.
I have a mistake in this, and if I could ask for an amendment on the dollar value of the backup material, the total dollar value is $47,464.45. The backup material for that article is correct, but on the front page, or I'm sorry, page six that you guys are looking at, where it says Article 21-13, I will need to update both times that that dollar value is mentioned right there.
Okay, Mr. Nelson?
Madam Chair, I move that my prior motion be amended to reflect a different dollar figure. We will strike the figure of $44,753.10 and will replace it with the figure of $47,464.45.
Second.
Mrs. Russo?
Aye. Or second?
The second, Mrs. Russo, is that correct?
Yes.
Sorry, all right. Are there any further comments or questions before we vote? Okay, Mrs. Russo?
Aye.
Voting on this now, Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Okay. Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So that's five zero zero again. Thank you. So moving on to the next item is the Elementary Planning for Success document that we saw, had a first reading on last week. And this is a second reading. I'm going to ask if any of the committee members have any comments or questions, and otherwise, we can just vote. So Kristen, do you have any comments or questions?
No, it was well done.
Okay. Steve? You're, I'm, yeah.
I have no questions, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, Tom?
I'm all set with it all, so.
Chris?
All set.
Okay, are there any, is there anyone else participating tonight who has any comments to add to this discussion on the Elementary Planning for Success? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. Kristen?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so that's five zero zero. The Elementary Planning for Success plan has been approved. Thank you for all the people who put all the work into doing that. So we will now move on to our new business. And I'd like to find out from Dr. Conti and the committee. We had talked about maybe not beginning a discussion of the Marshall Simons Planning for Success tonight and waiting till our next meeting. I would take suggestions, Dr. Conti, input?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just thought because this was a new format for us, that if we could try to streamline the agenda, I think really what we needed was the vote on the capital warrants, and I appreciate all the time and effort that took. If we could just get right to the middle school, the early childhood center, and the special ed budget. the early childhood center, and the special ed budget, that would be my recommendation.
So I'm suggesting then that we postpone our first reading for the Marshall Simons Planning for Success and for the Burlington Early Childhood Center Planning for Success until a future meeting. Are there any concerns from the committee members that do not? Very none. We'll move on to now our fiscal 21 draft budgets. And Dr. Conti, would you like us to take them in the order they are here? First, the Burlington Early Childhood Center?
Sure.
And I will pass this on to you and maybe Ms. Kasha, whoever you feel should present it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I'm going to turn it right over to Nicole because I think she has the information and I can't really see everybody.
Okay. Ms. Kasha?
Hi, everyone. Sorry, my video is not working right now. Every time I try to activate it, I get kicked off the meeting, so.
Oh, well, we don't have you here, so.
So starting out with BECC, I can just turn it right over to Deb and she can sort of talk about her budget. There was a decrease. And I don't believe any additional staff was requested. And that was all in the new PDF that was emailed out today.
Okay. Do you have anything you want to comment on?
So for the budget, we had, just based on our population and our numbers, we had decreased our summer programming costs that obviously may change in light of everything that's happening now. But we had anticipated a decrease just based on what we have. So that's why there's a decrease there. We're not asking to increase any staff right now. However, Mary Hood with Special Ed is going to be talking about increasing a staff member that will impact the Early Childhood Center, giving us some more staffing in an area that we need that. So those would be our big, our two big things.
Can you clarify for me? The operating budget is not making any additional requests? But the special ed, the...
We share a BCBA between the Developmental Skills Center and the Early Childhood Center. And we'll be asked, Mary, I don't want to speak for her presentation, but that will benefit us.
Okay. Questions or comments from the committee members? Kristen?
No, thank you.
Okay, Steve?
No, I'm all set. My question was going to be about staffing and she answered that question, so thank you.
Okay, Tom?
I'm all set, thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, I'm wondering if, wondering if we're going to need summer programs this year because of, because of everything that's going on.
Right, I mean, I just, I think that's something that's up in the air right now. We had planned for this when Nicole and I chatted in, I think it was December, late December, early January, that we went through our final draft. So obviously, things have changed a lot. So that was a number that we came up with back then. But obviously, things can change.
Yes, I have, I have real concerns about some of the specialization children who may have problems with this break in their school year and regression. And I don't want to lock ourselves out of being able to provide summer programming.
Right, that's why I wanted to bring up that this, you know, this was done a while ago and we may have to relook at that at a future date, depending on what happens and with some of the directives coming down from DESI.
Okay, just, just so that everyone's on the same page.
Yep.
Dr. Conti, do you want to comment on this issue?
No, I think Mrs. Monaco is spot on. And so I just don't have any specific answers yet. And how we are providing support for students who are required to have it is still a, it's a very difficult answer. It's a difficult question, but we're not getting a clear answer on it. So could we be required to provide additional summer services? The answer is that's a very good possibility. And I think, Mrs. Monaco, we're just going to have to adjust to that as we get more information.
Martha, can I chime in?
Yes, please do.
So Eric, I guess what I'm thinking of is, it would be a summer program if we extended the school year for children with special needs who have, who need makeup time, facing regression, et cetera.
So it wouldn't be, the DESI has been pretty good with their language. It wouldn't be compensatory or regression. We would have to look at students on a case-by-case basis to see how this closure impacted them and where their skills are. I think we're going to see regression in all students, whether they are receiving special education services or not. Certainly, we want to take a look at how it's impacted each individual student and what they might need for those, you know, some additional supports.
Okay, I just want to keep that door wide open.
Did you want to respond to that, Deb?
To?
Do you want to respond to that or no?
No, again, I think, I think we're in agreement with Mrs. Monaco. We're, we want to, we're remaining open. I just think we're, we're seeking some, some direction. And a lot of the definitions people are trying to change. So I think we're going to have to revisit this topic, certainly before the end of the school year.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Monaco, do you have anything else?
No, that, that works for me. I just want to make sure that it's an open discussion.
And I would like to add that, you know, this is just the, we were, we are theoretically talking about the Early Childhood Center, but this question will be true for all of our special needs students as well as, and as well as our students and how, how all that's going to work out. We just don't have any way to answer it yet, I think. So thank you for raising this, though. Are there other committee members? I've not, I've lost track of who I've asked to, do you have other questions on that, Chris?
No, all set.
And I don't remember who I've called on. Are there other committee members who had a question or a comment on the BECC budget presentation? See, hearing none. I don't think we are taking votes on these, but there's, that's the presentation. I want to thank you, Deb, for the work that went into this. And I know there's a lot going on and things are going to change, but thank you for everything that you put out for us tonight.
I had a question before we leave that topic, please?
I apologize, Mr. Eiler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this may be a question for Nicole. I, I couldn't find where the BECC budget is in the budget book.
Okay, Ms. Kasha, can you reply?
Yes, so John, you should have received an additional email this afternoon that I sent out, which included accommodated. The accommodated budget was a little bit delayed this year due to the changes in our circuit breaker reimbursement, which going forward will now include transportation costs. Myself and Mary Hood attended something in the past few weeks that sort of laid out the guidelines of how that's going to be calculated and how that looks going forward. So that's sort of the reasoning why the accommodated budget was lagging to be released a little bit than the others. But that was sent out this afternoon.
Okay, great, I did see you sent that. I didn't realize that was going to be within accommodated, so I wasn't looking there. Thank you. So just to make sure I'm looking at the right thing, the BECC budget is up 2% is the right number to be looking at?
Correct.
Great, thank you, Nicole.
Okay. And since that is, was not available, Ms. Kasha, as part of the budget, the full budget document we got earlier, can, if it's not already done, can you post that, that document that you sent us today alongside of the other documents? So it will be available for everyone?
Yes, yeah, I'll put the request and have that put up on the website.
Thank you very much. All right. So are we ready? Is there any other questions or comments before we move on to the next item? Okay, so the next topic is the Marshall Simons draft budget. And Dr. Conti, who shall we call on first?
Again, I'm going to let Nicole frame the, frame the conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So for expenses, Cary level funded 0%. In your operating budget book, starts on page 52. There were a couple of personnel requests, 2.46% FTE, which is on pages five and six. But I'm sure Cary would welcome to explain and give her rationale for those requests. So I'll turn it over to Cary now.
Okay, Ms. Purchase?
Hi, good evening, everyone. The personnel requests are really in terms of, we have a library media specialist. Years ago, there was a 1.5 FTE associated with that. Last year, we went down to a 1.6. The individual who's doing that job is doing a wonderful job in keeping the spirit of the library open on three days a week. And we're looking to request an additional 1.4 to make that a full FTE or an equivalent of a full FTE to provide library support, library media support in our learning commons every day. That is one of the FTE requests. Another is, we currently have a math coach that provides tier-two support to students requiring additional support in mathematics. She's also a part-time employee and is working on the current equivalency of a 1.6. We are requesting a 1.4 to make that position a full FTE equivalent. The other full FTE request we are seeking, and Mary Hood might speak more of, more to this, as well as our, we're looking to request an additional speech-language pathologist. This year, we started a language-based learning disability program in sixth grade. And the team has done a wonderful job supporting that profile of student. And we are looking to roll that up into seventh grade next year and eighth grade the following year. One of the adjustments that we're making to the structure of the program is right now the special educator is in all of the classes with that cohort of students, providing specialized instruction in an inclusive setting. And we are hoping to provide additional support and specialized instruction in addition to that support and specialized instruction that's happening in the inclusive setting. And talking with the teachers from the team, the special educator on the team, and then also working along with the consultants, they felt that the language instruction would be strengthened by increasing, having the speech-language pathologist provide that. And with our current speech-language pathologist, we wouldn't be able to continue her service case manager list and to have her potentially co-teach two sections. So that's why we're requesting the increase in that area. And finally, not necessarily an FTE, but we are looking for additional support for an ELL tutor for about 20 hours a week. Our, our numbers of students, of English language learners has been stable and we're expecting that next year. But as we know that that can change. This year, we've also seen a number of students who are newcomers and their level of need is more. And that we do have a full-time English language teacher, but we felt that providing additional support to students would be helpful for their, their learning.
Thank you. Are there any other parts of the budget that you would like to comment on? Or should we just look, seek these questions?
I'm happy to take questions. I think that the operating budget, as Ms. Kasha said, was level funded, so there wasn't an increase. There are certainly things that, you know, adjusted, you know, a little bit in terms of line items, but it is level funded. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. So in terms of the committee members, Mrs. Monaco, do you have any questions on the middle school budget?
No, I don't.
Okay. Mr. Murphy?
None for me, thank you.
Mr. Nelson?
I have a question for Cary. Cary, if you, if you had to rank the four positions in order of priority, which, how would you rank them?
That's, that is, that's a tough question, Mr. Nelson. I think that, gosh, I would, I honestly would probably put the, the math support person and right on top with the speech-language pathologist. And even if, that we needed to reduce the 1.0 speech-language pathologist, if we could have that be a partial FTE, a 1.4 would help us there. So that's how I would prioritize it. I think that it's hard to prioritize. But if we're looking at direct support to services, those would be the, the two. The 20 hours of tutoring would also be there.
Okay. I know it's a tough question. We've got 22 positions, I think, in the budget this year. So unfortunately, we can't get support for all of them, so.
No, I understand.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Russo?
I just have one question. It's regarding student supplies. It looks like the student supplies was brought into instructional supplies. Is that correct?
Yes, so last year, when we developed the budget, we looked at instructional supplies, we looked at student supplies, and then we looked at kind of the supplies for each of the, the different departments and materials and things. One of the things in, in, the amount is the same. It's, and we're talking about like pencils that go into a student's hand or notebooks that go into a student's hand versus, you know, dry erase markers that the teachers are using. This was really a decision made to month the classroom supplies and the instructional supplies together as they're all used for instruction. And it just makes it a little simpler on the ordering end of things, the procurement end of things in terms of keeping track of, you know, when we go to one vendor, we're not charging two different accounts and things.
Great, thank you. And then with regard to the possibility of a therapy dog for the middle school, how is that progressing? Because I think there are many people who are very excited for that possibility.
Yes, so we have a very committed group of, of teachers. And I want to give a shout out to Mrs. Danlunch, Mrs. Julian McQueeney, and Mrs. Jessica Cooper O'Neil, who have been kind of working the, the system behind. We just sent out that notification. They're just starting fundraising at this point. We have contacted a breeder who regularly donates to organizations, whether it's first responders or schools. And we have, you know, they've said that we could potentially have one of their dogs. So in terms of having the, the dog donated, but then we'd be looking at training and that. So I don't think that it's going to happen tomorrow. We're hoping that it happens at some point in time. And then we'll have to make sure that we're budgeting for that as well going forward.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Eiler, any questions from you on the middle school budget?
No questions, thank you.
Or other members of the Ways and Means Committee? Well, and thank you very much, Cary, again, for all the work and thought you put into this. And I sure wish we could support all those positions, but we'll have to see how it all works out.
I understand, I understand, thank you.
All right. And if there are last requests for any questions or comments before we move on? Thank you. So we'll move on now to the special education budget. And I'm going to bypass Dr. Conti and ask Ms. Kasha if you can give us the introduction. And I think Ms. Hood is available also. Are you still here, Ms. Hood? Thank you for, thank you to all of you for participating in this long, tedious meeting tonight. I appreciate all of your presence, so. Ms. Kasha?
Sure. So for special education, obviously, we have both sides, the operating and the accommodated. Starting out with operating, Ms. Hood was able to level fund her expenses, so a 0% increase, which starts on page 171, if, if you're referencing that. And then in terms of personnel, I believe just district-wide that Mary was requesting and/or supporting, there was a 1 FTE requesting. So I'll turn it over to Mary to start with operating now and then we can revisit accommodated after.
Okay. Ms. Hood, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. As Nicole said, we're able to level fund our operating budget. I have requested one full-time board-certified behavior analyst. The reason for that request is that we currently have one full-time BCBA. The reason for that request is that we currently have one full-time BCBA who is split between the Pine Glen DSC program and the Early Childhood Center. She is very hardworking, but we really need more support than that. And we need some fluctuate, we need some ability to have behavioral support services at the middle school and at Francis Swimman and occasionally at Fox Hill and Memorial as well. Currently, when some of those needs come up, we use contracted services to fit that need. But we have sat down and really looked at a way to see if we, if we actually had two FTEs, how could we use them to cover district-wide and the two programs? And what we would look at is to have one BCBA four days a week at the Early Childhood Center, one day a week, supporting the rest of the district. And the other BCBA, four days a week at the DSC at Pine Glen and supporting the rest of the district one day a week. We would be saving money that we currently pay for contracted services to an agency who does some FBAs and some consulting. And I'm going to give you an approximate amount on that because I don't have the actual number in front of me, but that's about forty thousand a year.
All right. Are there any other comments on the budget that you'd like to make before we actually go to questions?
I would like to say one thing that I'm very concerned that that position, given the current situation that we're in, is going to become even more important. I do think that we will have more use for the position than I had even thought when planning this.
I think you're right. Yes, okay. So committee members' questions. Kristin?
Hi, thank you. With regard to the contract service, so do we have the same person coming in each time? I appreciate that there may be a savings, but what I think I'd appreciate even more is the consistency of the same person knowing our students and knowing our system. And teachers, could you speak a little bit about that, or do we sort of have some of that?
We do have some consistency because Kindle Behavior Supports does give us one person who is consulting in different places. At times, she's unable to support an FBA that we weren't planning on. And we might call in someone else, but at least for the consultation pieces, we try to keep it consistent so that she has relationships with the staff.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Mr. Nelson, do you have any questions for Mary?
No, it sounds like she's justified the need for that new position. And I'm hoping when the dust settles that it's going to be in our final approved budget.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Murphy?
No, thank you.
Okay, Chris?
Yeah, I have a question for Mary. Mary, in realistic terms, how many BCBAs do we really need, looking at all the schools?
Um.
I mean, I know it's, I know it is going to happen, but I just want to know the reality.
Reality, I would, if I had a wish list, I'd say two point five. If we could get two, I think we could improve the programming that we're doing now and provide some nice supports to the other schools. But with our students, we're really looking at fine-tuning some programming for students at the middle school and the autism spectrum. And as that evolves and our students from DSC who are currently in the DSC program move up to the middle school, we would be looking at needing more behavioral support there. So over time, it is going to expand. But in the, in the current year, I think that with two point oh, we would be in better shape than we were this year.
Do you see anything happening for the high school level?
The high school level, what we've started with is we've reached out to New England Center for Children to get some consultation, both at the high school level and at the middle school level, so that we can start preparing for students that are moving from the middle school up to the high school. So we need to increase our consultation in those two spots. But I have planned that into the local, the operating budget.
Okay, I'm also concerned about the students on the spectrum that are already at the high school, but.
Mm-hmm. So we're increasing the consultation for this coming year. And part of their consultation will be for improving and expanding the programming for the following year. The needs are going to become more diversified.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone from the Ways and Means who has a question about the special ed budget?
Yes, please.
Yes, Mr. Eiler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one question on page one seventy-one, the contracted services, line item five-three-seven-eight. I was curious, you know, the amount being requested seems to be a lot larger than the amount in FY twenty spent so far. So it's a hundred eighteen thousand versus three thousand spent so far. Are the expenses in that, you know, tail-end loaded, or is, what's the reasoning on that, please?
Oh, that's a good question. I think that, I'm not sure how that's going to be impacted with us out of school. But there have been part of our meetings with NAC and other schools to start working towards expanding the program next year. We'll fall into that this year. We're also using some contracted speech and language services that are coming out of there that will show up this year as we move forward that we didn't need in the fall.
Okay, so there's new expenses coming in, is what you're saying?
Yes, well, they were until we stopped, but.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Are there any other questions or comments on the special ed budget from anyone who's participating tonight? Thank you very much, Ms. Hood, for the work you put into this and all the work you put into it all the time. And we certainly appreciate it. So I think we've addressed our review of the draft budgets.
Oh, excuse me, Martha, do we have accommodated?
Was accommodated was not on the list for tonight?
Okay.
Conti, what was your intention with that? Are you available, Doc?
We're going to follow the, I think we're going to follow the budget calendar as best we can. So Nicole, when was accommodated supposed to be discussed?
Not that, so that would just fall under special education and would cover both operating and accommodated.
So that was covered tonight?
Yes.
Okay, so we want to cover accommodated. So, Ms. Russo, do you have questions from the accommodated budget?
Not at this time, but if Ms. Hood had anything she would like to share leading into it.
Ms. Hood? Mary?
I think I just want to point out that there have been some shifts in kind of the different out-of-district tuition lines. And I think everyone on the school committee probably realizes that those are a moving target as we have people moving into the district, children aging out, children moving programs. So Nicole and I have worked pretty hard trying to nail it down. But it is, you know, it is in flux at all times. And we have repeatedly looked at it to make sure I haven't missed anything because the numbers have changed a little bit from last year. And we're, you know, we're keeping a close eye on that piece for you.
Thank you.
Okay. So are there other committee members who have questions about the accommodated account? Steve?
Came out kind of late, so I haven't studied it as much as I would like to, but I can always deal with those questions in subcommittee meetings, so I'm all set.
Okay. Tom?
I'm all set as well, thank you.
Okay, Chris?
I do have one question. Given that the circuit breaker is going to be expanded to include transportation, does that money go straight to the town? Does it impact the accommodated account at all? Or is that just something that the town deals with in their accounting?
Nicole, can you add to that one for me?
Of course. So the circuit breaker specifically comes back and we use it as an offset to our actual expenses. So it does not go back to the town. We use it as an offset. And the additional transportation piece that we're being able to submit for reimbursement starting this fiscal year for monies to be reimbursed next year, it does include that here. I do just want to note that the overall three percent increase in the total accommodated budget, we had budgeted our circuit breaker at seventy percent within this budget, being optimistic with the Student Opportunity Act and all this additional money pouring into schools that they would be funding hopefully fully at seventy-five percent. So just, I don't know, something to keep in mind in the current economic conditions. And obviously, it's still early to see, you know, where those things will pan out. But if we were to decrease and assume a sixty-five percent reimbursement rate for circuit breaker would be at about four point eight percent on the total accommodated budget and around a two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar increase to the already three, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand that you see.
So the, the transportation piece doesn't actually kick in for another year?
So we apply for it the end of this fiscal year. It would receive the monies next year to be used.
At what point next year?
They issue the payments quarterly.
Oh, all right. And so the way it works, since we use it directly, it would reduce what we need to spend out of the accommodated account, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, all set, thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments on the accommodated account?
Yes, please. Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, as Mr. Nelson pointed out, we just got this, so I think we'll probably discuss it in a subcommittee meeting. So along those lines, I wanted to just check our, we currently had a subcommittee meeting scheduled with the school committee on Monday, the thirtieth. So a little less than a week from now. I just wanted to verify, is that something we think is still happening? Is that a WebEx meeting, or what's the plan for that meeting?
Okay, I'm going to, yes, Dr. Conti?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Mr. Eiler, I can't answer the format of the meeting. I was going to have Ms. Gilbert confirm the date and time. And I think one strong possibility is we would have to have a virtual subcommittee meeting on the thirtieth.
Okay, but anyway, the expectation is we should keep that on our calendars, it's going to happen somehow.
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments regarding either the accommodated account or the Ways and Means Subcommittee meeting? Okay. This has been kind of strange, but we do, the last item on the agenda is public participation, which I would entertain a motion to eliminate, which the wording is there on the agenda. Somebody's interested in doing that.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we vote to temporarily suspend policy BEDH, public participation in school committee meetings with respect to the second public participation session in tonight's meeting.
Second?
Okay, that's Mrs. Russo's second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Kristin?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, that's five-zero-zero. And before we adjourn, I do want to comment that we have some really dedicated parents of students with special needs who run the CPAC, and they often attend our meetings. And if there are issues and questions, they are always good about bringing them up. They did send me a note today and were very supportive of the dedication of all the staff and all the things that are going on as we all struggle to navigate the new normal. As they are working through problems and situations that months ago seemed unfathomable. I'm going to quote their letter. "We also want to thank all of the teachers and administrators in Burlington for their hard work in this challenging time, and especially in regard to providing enrichment ideas and the level of thoughtful communication exchanged by our teachers who are also juggling the same uncertainty we are, but still making every effort to go the extra mile for our students." And I'm going to skip to the end. They are, they are appreciative of the ways that the town of Burlington continues to rally around the most vulnerable in our community and want to be sure and note, noting our community does not align itself with actions or policies that turn a blind eye to the needs of its citizens living with disabilities or facing insecurities. Students with disabilities require meaningful inclusion, specialized services, individualized support, and real-time support, along with so much more. Distance learning is difficult for any family, but the added pressure of being a teacher, parent, professional therapist, special educator, and more becomes unsustainable. And the gap between educational outcomes for disabled and non-disabled students is almost certain to grow. As we all attempt to navigate the next steps, we, the CPAC, know in our hearts that you, our school committee and administration, will stand with us in ensuring equality in education for all students in Burlington. We can empathize that there is no one-size-fits-all solution to this problem, but we feel that we have a lot to offer to this discussion and would love to be part of the conversation. Thank you again for all of your continued support, and stay well. So I want to thank them for their comments. I want to thank them for their offer. I know that Mary Hood, our special ed director, is in constant contact with them and that all of our teachers and administrators are working to be sure that every child is included in the educational experience in Burlington and has access to what they need. And so thank you again for being our eyes and ears on the ground there, and I appreciate it. If, are there any committee members who would like to comment on that letter? I know you didn't have a chance to see it before the meeting.
I'd just like to say amen.
Yes. So are there any other items for discussion tonight?
No, Madam Chair, I just wanted to thank the committee for their flexibility and staff for participating in this new format. I think Nicole and I were exploring, my understanding is the, the public hearing law falls under a different statute than the regular meeting law. So we're getting a, we're getting some advice from Darren on what, how we can run a virtual public hearing, or the state may have to take some action on that. So we're just exploring that, but we'll get some answers. I'm sure everyone is going to be in the same problem we are. So we just, I don't have details as to how the public hearing is going to happen yet.
Okay, and yes, in the future, we do hope to have public participation available. And I want to thank Mr. Kuna and everyone, I'm not even sure who put together the technology so we could hold this meeting available for the public to observe. And again, if people have comments or questions, please email us, we're available. And our next scheduled meeting will be on the scheduled date, which I believe is April fourteenth, unless there's an emergency, and Dr. Conti will let us know if we need to meet before then. I also want to, one more time, thank all of our teachers and staff and custodians and everybody and the administrators who are putting together everything that our students need to stay healthy, to stay in touch, and hopefully, rolling out next week the new distance learning, so there'll be even more ways for our students. so there'll be even more ways for our students to be connected and hopefully more resources for parents. I want to thank all the families and parents. I'm, I don't have any children at home, but I know this is quite difficult to be managing everything. Thank you, everyone, for pulling in. And as, as somebody said, none of us signed up for this, and it's our, all of our first pandemics. So we are all doing our best and are grateful for all the staff in the Burlington Public Schools. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Still moved.
Second?
Okay. Mr. Murphy moved and Mr. Nelson seconded. And so Kristen?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So this meeting is now adjourned. And thank you all.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.